Good evening. Welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, May 16, 2020-22. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the May 2, 2022 minutes. Any board members have any comments, corrections?
I wasn't here, so I wasn't going to vote.
Okay. I have no corrections.
Neither. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that's submitted.
Motion's made in second. I'm going to say a motion, aye?
Aye.
And Sinead is not going to be voting on that. Okay, moving along. Tonight, we have three special permits and a zoning amendment. For a special permit, you need the vote of four board members. Unfortunately, we have two members out ill this evening. So if anybody wants a continuance, we have a full board. We're always welcome to give you that continuance. So if anybody wants a continuance, let us know when we call the matter, or they can raise their hand now, and we can continue it now if they like. Anybody here looking for continuance? Okay, hearing none, we'll move along on the agenda. Do we have the applicants here for Chansford Street? Okay. All right. So we have special permit for 637, 639 Chansford Street. Eric Chim has applied to the Lowell Planning Board for a special permit approval to convert the existing two-family building at the above address into a three-family building. The subject property is located in the traditional neighborhood, mixed-use zoning district. The applicant requires special permit approval per Article 12-1C for the use of the Lowell Planning Board. Just come to the microphone and state your name. Put a record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Hushman Afshar from Targe Engineering, and I'm representing the owner and applicant, Mr. Eric Chim, for 637, 639 Chansford Street, requesting a special permit and variance for relief from minimum office street parking and open space. The existing building has been operating as a three-family thus far or previously, and now the applicant and the owner has come to know that needs to be legalized, and he's requesting accordingly. The, in terms of parking, according also the notes from DPD, there has never been problem of the parking for the, for the building. It has been working as a, it has been utilized as a three-family building. Also, in addition to that, the Mulligan parking garage is within 900 feet of the subject, subject property. Also, the currently, the four cars can be parked on the property itself, two in the garage and two on the paved driveway. The applicant has, is willing and agreed to the requirements or comments of the building commissioner in terms of adding electrical and gas meters for each unit and emergency lighting in the stairwells, and also install interconnected photovoltaic smoke detectors. In terms of open space, well, it's an existing non-conforming, and the applicant does not intend to create any more impervious area on the property. With that, I would like to leave it for any questions, and the applicant is hoping to receive approval from the board.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in
favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody this evening here like to speak? If anybody comes along, can let me know if, okay. Would anybody here like to speak in opposition for this project? In opposition? In opposition? Okay, so hearing from, nobody like to speak on the project? Any of the board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't have any questions. Just, oh, I guess I have one question to the applicant. Do you know how long it's been operating as a three-family?
I can only, I can only give you an estimate.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I want to say about 15 years.
Okay, all right, all right. No, I mean, it's, you know, there's, there's nobody here speaking in opposition. It was posted. The building commissioner has actually provided a letter in, in favor of, of legalizing the third unit. As a matter of fact, this will allow some work to be done, really, to address some issues. So I, you know, making it legal really addresses some other issues as well. From the building commissioner's perspective, the engineering department has no issues. I was happy to see there was a parking restriction sign from a certain point on Viola Street to the corner of Chansford Street, because it does reference that there is some availability of on-street parking there. But obviously, there's some concern having parking right when you turn on to Viola, as Viola, when you drive down that street, parking is pretty tight when you get beyond this property. But overall, the property is certainly well-kept. It has a two, two-stall garage with the driveway. It's been existing this way for quite some time. It really is to put it in conformity from a building perspective, from the building commissioner's perspective. So from, from that pers, from my perspective, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm fine with the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Sinead or Caleb, have any questions? Sinead, I'll start with you, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'm in support of this project. I read through the staff comments, and I think they were generally supportive, and it's proximity to available on-street parking and open space. So I support this project.
Thank you. Caleb?
I have one observation when I'm visiting the site. There are two cars parking on the sidewalk on Chumpfer Street. So I think it's not good for cars blocking pedestrian access. So if parking is not an issue, those cars shouldn't be parking on the sidewalk. Now, I'm not sure if those cars are related to this property or not, but just making sure, like, you know, if you can convey to the applicant, if there is any tenants parking on the sidewalk, that's not preferable.
No. Actually, it's a violation of the city rules to park on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
The sidewalk is for pedestrians, yeah?
The Chumpfer Street I know is busy, so there is probably, they want to probably park away from the traffic, but soon be on the sidewalk.
You said you, I didn't hear you very well. You said they were parked on the sidewalk?
Yeah, so they're mounting the sidewalk.
Sure, sure. It's a sidewalk, not sidecar.
Yes. Thank you.
Sure, of course.
But I'm, I'm also in supportive of making the unit legal.
So I see here you have to go to the zoning board of appeals. Have you been there yet, or do you have a date in the future, sir?
Next week, sir.
Next week?
Yes.
Okay. So that's where you're looking for your relief from the parking, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So there, okay. So from the, so you're looking for the minimum, minimum usable open space?
Well, I didn't know, but we did.
And as you're asked, okay.
I know Steph did, because they got a junior suite.
Okay, I have no further questions.
And I know Mam and Kenny did, because they had to get a connecting room, because Casey has to have a.
So what's requested the board, that we're looking for a special permit?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the petition, and I really have no conditions to add.
But, yeah, anyway, so, none of the world, I mean, if you brought two.
No, it looks like the relief they would be needing would be at the ZBA.
That is correct. I mean, we're looking at the, from a special permits perspective, how reasonable is it that this changes from a two to a three? It's already been operating as a three. As Sinead mentioned in the DPD memo, it does reference some availability to parks and open space. And again, I'm, I have no problem with density by design. If it's well-kept and it's well-designed, it, you know, it fits into the neighborhood, and it's been there for quite some time. It's in keeping with the other homes that are in the area. So from that perspective, I, there's no, no, no condition to be placed on it other than approving the petition.
Okay. So we have a motion for approval by Mr. Fichette. Can we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Can we not see the meeting?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. The matter's been approved. Good luck, sir. Next matter on the agenda is 22 Bellevue Street. Magda McKeel has applied to Lowell Planning Board to convert the existing two-family structure at the above address into a three-family structure. The subject property is located in the traditional neighborhood, multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval from the planning board per Article 12.1C to expand a residential structure into three units. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. They can't hear what? Oh, they can't? Oh. Okay, they said they're down the hall, if we knew. He's, he came in earlier?
Yeah.
Okay. He said if we had any questions, just to go down and check with him. Okay, thanks. Hmm.
Hey, there's a man behind the curtain. All right, you should be looking at that.
Okay. Can people hear me on Zoom now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Was anybody on Zoom had any comments on the first project we just did, not knowing that you were, people were there on Chansford Street?
Not in, I've been online, and nobody was in chat about that, and I haven't heard, you're the first voice I've heard.
Okay, all right, so we'll move along. So as indicated, the next matter is 22 Bellevue Street. This is to convert an existing two-family structure into a three-family structure. The subject property is located in traditional neighborhood, multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval from the planning board per Article 12-1C to expand a residential structure to three units. May we hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Magda McKeel. I'm the owner, and I'd like to have the third floor to be a, make a three-family. You have space for the parking lot, and then you do have a space in the front house, too. I'd like to have approval for the third floor.
So you're going to put all the parking in the rear except for one in the front?
They do have four, four space in the back and one in the front, the building for, in the, in the promises. And I have two in the parking street, so two parking lot and
So one of the comments that we did receive from staff before I turned it over to the public is they're saying if your parking spot on number five, they'd have to back all the way out to the street.
Number five?
Yep, parking lot number five.
Now, number five, leaving the front of the building, you know, he's talking about the one in front of the building, in the promises?
Well, number five, you have the plan, right?
No, I didn't have it with me, I'm sorry. The truck is supposed to be here, but.
Yeah, well, number five would be in the rear, you go all the way down the driveway, and then number five.
Yes.
Planning staff says you'd have to back it all the way out there, and they're kind of concerned on how you do that with any snow on that roadway. Okay. So is that the plan, is to make that car go all the way, backed all the way down? Get around parking spot number two and go all the way the length of the driveway backwards?
Uh, we can. One, two, three, four. I believe he said about something, about to move the stairs to the right side to three feet and make a space to can make it 9.2, and this is the one he did. I didn't move the stairs yet. That's the only option I have from me right now. And, and the space for the snow, it should be the small space over here next to park two. And also, I have some space in the front of the building, too, next to park number one. There's no, and I remove the snow, if it's, if it's a lot of snow, I have a company to clean all my, my, my buildings. They can remove the snow from, from back there and the truck, whatever. I have a five, a three houses in Lowell, one of them, one company take care of all those for the snow.
So you push the snow the length of the driveway back to all the, where all the parking spaces are?
If, if you like, there's not much snow. If it's more snow, we have the truck, we have the company do it, take care of the snow.
Okay. So where do you put the snow before the truck comes to take it off site?
We push it from, I'm sorry, we, we have the, we push it from the back to the front, like you said, yeah.
So if parking spot number five has to back out, does that mean the truck that does the plowing has to back out?
We have different design. I saw that people park it differently, but our here's the, the ways they have it. I think the other way, we have more space.
Okay. So did you receive part of the comments from staff that we received?
I see, yeah, I did.
Okay. So I'm just asking a couple of questions that staff asked. So I thought that.
There is no, when you see.
I mean, because it also comes up with engineer talking about there's no storage, there's no storage on this, on, there's no designated snow storage on, on the lot that you gave us with all the lengthy driveways. Okay. At this time, I'll turn it over to the public, and then any other board members or myself will come back and ask some more questions.
Okay.
Unless you have anything further you'd like to add, sir?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I have to talk to the, my engineers, see what to say about this.
Okay. Anybody this evening like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Anybody here in opposition? In opposition? Anybody in the Zoom? No? No, Dylan? No? Okay. At this time, I'll turn it over to the board members. Dylan, if I don't see anybody in Zoom, just flag me, okay? All right. So I'll turn it over to board members. Any board members want to follow up, any question?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because I did go out to the site and took some photos. I walked in the back, and matter of fact, it looks like there's a lot more parking if, if the parking goes the length, I'm sorry, the width of the area in the back. So I don't know why, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes no sense. There were three cars parked there when I went in the back, and there was a huge vacant area for another vehicle with plenty of room. I don't know why this configuration is here.
His question is, if you went down the driveway, why didn't you keep going and have the cars facing the barn instead of taking the left turn and facing the adjacent property?
I think it's, yeah, this, the ways they have set up here is differently with the way I see it when I go in the parking lot. I don't know, I didn't see this correctly like this before. And I see the three cars, one, two, three, with the angle, and you have more space on the other side, and have more space with the garage, with the shed, little shed here has a snowmobile and stuff here. It has more space with the angle. If you see it from the satellite, I see it differently from this one.
So did, did you have an engineer do this for you?
That was the second one we got.
Yeah, the second one. He said, that's the second one?
Yeah. The first one didn't, didn't have the dimension correctly.
Yeah, yeah. If his second one, he sent.
Yeah. The first one, it didn't have the open space in the back done correctly, and the engineer picked up on that, and then they submitted a new one to us.
So, but it's more space there.
If I may, like, I might suspect that the lot line might, the car might be parking on the adjacent, the behind lot, because the back of the barn or garage is beyond the edge of the property line. So if the car have more room to go behind, then it will have more room than, than this layout, because there are certainly no wall in between at the lot line. And I think, secondly, also, like, the city have the requirement to have, I think, three feet setback from the lot line for parking spaces.
Yeah.
So you can't literally go to a lot line in a, I guess, an official parking space So that might be a factor. Engineer have to work it out.
And then also, DPD in their, their comment letter is proposing a condition to remove three feet of the pavement. The applicant removed paving within three feet of the property lines at the front rear in north property lines, with the exception of the driveway, and within three feet of the building to ensure residents do not park within the setback. That's a tight site. Are you looking to, is that, you're prepared to do that?
Yes, sir.
I know parking is a real premium in that neighborhood.
Yes.
And I'm not a, I don't really love that, when I was there, that car was parked right in the front yard with the paving. It doesn't look the best, but I know it gets a vehicle off the road. It's, it's tight. And most of the, most of the properties have a residence parking placate right in front of their, their home, which makes it a little bit more difficult as well for off-street
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment.
Sure, go ahead, please.
I'll just add that I share the concerns about the parking as it's shown, and I think that Caleb might be right, that basically, once you put the lot lines in, that the parking becomes really challenging on-site. So I agree with all the comments about those challenges. I also just wanted to note that I agree with the staff report about the layout of the bedrooms. I'm a little concerned about the floor plans as they're shown right now. They're not showing windows, doors, square footage for the bedrooms, and that some of the bedrooms look really small. So in general, converting from a two-family to a three-family and actually having it fit in this space, I'm, I'm concerned about without having more information.
So I would, I would agree in the thought that more clarification on the, the floor plan, more clarification on the park. I think that needs to be, that needs to be worked on some more. The parking is tight. It really is tight. And depending upon the bedrooms, too, I just have some concerns that what the parking demand's going to be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Caleb, anything further you want to follow up on?
I think one way to figure out a parking view, I mean, regarding the lot line, might be if there's, like, markings that a land surveyor can, or engineer can mark out on site, and you actually look at it. That, that might be a helpful exercise if, if you want to look at further ways to lay out the parking lot, because it's good to know where your lot line is when designing the.
Yeah.
And, and especially when, when you are agreed to remove that three, three feet of pavement, it will be good to mark on the, on the pavement right now to, okay, that's actually where it ends, so how the layout works.
Yeah, I can mark it if you want to see it. We can do that.
So, Chairman, that's it.
Okay. Sinead, do you have anything further to add?
No further comment, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, it almost sounds like it would require a site visit. At some point, once everything gets marked out, it wouldn't be a bad.
You get underthink, like you say, we need some more information on, especially the unit they're going to be. So where's the, where would the third, third unit be going, on the third floor?
It's an existing building. It hasn't had anything, you know. It's been there since
Another one, the staff comments we have is, you know, for the parking spot on designated number two, if that car is not pulled in far enough, or is not, if it's a big vehicle, then people who are parking in three, four, and five won't be able to make the turn to go down the driveway, especially if you push the snow straight in. They could say pull it back, but I don't know how you go all the way the length of the driveway to pull it back. When someone comes to a driveway, they drop their plow and push. I mean, they could, they do it on a shot driveway that, you know, when they go up to a garage door, when they're coming all the way back to an open space. And then if they pull it back, what they're doing is they're packing all the snow down onto the driveway, so your driveway is going to be filled with four to six inches of packed snow to begin with.
I just make sure that parking two has a small car all the time, and I will move the stairs from, they have three stairs there.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Because they say now that's only nine, nine feet, yeah. But how much are you going to pick up on the stairs if you move them? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just from a comment, from a practical standpoint, in the rear of that property, where it really is, you know, the, the garage is right abuts the, the property line from the property behind it, in, from a practical sense, whether that tower is taken off of there and a lawn is put in there, the cars are going to park right up on the, on the lawn. And we're not going to serve any good by requiring some sort of curbing to prevent that. And I don't even know how well a lawn is going to do back there, to be, I'm very, very honest with you. And it's not like it's a home where it's somebody's backyard and the cars are right there. That, that garage that there is like a wall behind that parking area. So we, we may want to consider that, some relief from that. That's not practical, I think. The parking's important. The, the, I think the green space on either side is important. That's visual to the homes on either side, and even from the street, you can see that. But if you, you know, going back there from. But if you, you know, going back there from parking, how, how important parking is in that neighborhood, from a practical sense, it's just going to be a mess, and cars are just going to drive up on there to create the room. I think we need to think about that. It's not really visible to anybody back there, so.
And as for the front three feet of, I think, pavement to be out, maybe perhaps there could be some landscaping or something that softened the car right in front of the house. So, suggestions, maybe some shrubs or something, but since there is some room, some extra room there.
I would rather see a little bit more effort put there and, and, you know, accommodate more the parking in the rear and provide relief there. Give me, Caleb, Caleb. Tell me, what's going to be gained by that? I mean, there's nothing to be gained by that.
They park all the way to the, to the wall, which here is like seven feet off.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see the floor plan revised with more detail. I'd actually, the board members are in agreement, I'd rather, I'd like to see a plan back with providing some relief from the, that three-foot buffer at the rear of the property where the garage is, and see what, how you can configure the parking better than what's situated here. And then some landscaping concept in the front, still maintaining that, that parking spot, but try to get a little bit more creative with some landscaping in the front. Again, I'm a big believer in density by design. You can go to some very nice communities where it's dense, but people take care of the properties and they have some nice landscaping and it works. And matter of fact, the gentleman across the street was cutting the lawn when I was there with a hand lawnmower, that was just rotary, and it actually looks quite nice. It's just a small lawn, but it actually looked decent, so I think that, we've got some opportunities to make it better and hopefully accommodate the parking a little bit better.
One suggestion might be, I see there is some extra five feet from the building to the parking space. So, if that five feet can, can be used, then with, like, a four-feet or five-feet lawn will make a lot more difference. If you steal like two feet or three feet from, like, shifting the front parking toward the house. So, since it's all pavement for now, so I guess, depending on how you cut it, you can, you might give more room to that buffer in the front.
Okay.
Yeah. Would be nicer to the, the house as well, to the property.
Yeah. Yeah, also, they have a 14 feet, the one that's just a walkway, they walk to the stairs in the front. The 14.7, this is all grass, we're going to bring grass because the previous owner, he has a concrete. So, probably this is the 14-inch grass on this side, and other side, too, from the sidewalk to the stairs in front of the house, too. Not much green in it, when I take over.
I understand.
Not much, really.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think, I'd like to continue it.
Sure, may I?
And if I can make a motion to continue, and that the applicant is to come back with a detailed floor plan for the unit, and also to revise that site plan to eliminate the rear buffer and reconfigure the parking. And to enhance that landscape a little bit more in the front.
Yeah, well, well, in the front, yes.
Okay.
Like I said, the 14 feet here, 14.7, and the other side of the sidewalk, and they got, also, they have on the side, side of the building is three feet, and the left side of my neighbor is three feet plus there. Plus, all these areas, I can make it green.
Okay. And in, in the back, if you tell your engineer, be creative in the rear of that building, what would be the best relief to try to get that parking configuration to be better than what it is? And then I, and then I think we can take a look at it, and I think from a, from the needs of the neighborhood, that will, that will serve us better. And then from a street perspective, as we refer to the streetscape, try to make it just slightly a little bit more attractive.
Sure.
And I think it's a win, so.
So, we have a motion on the floor for continuance?
I second the motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor for the continuance? Say aye.
Aye.
She have voted yes? So, looking at our agenda, our next meeting is June 6th, which is full, and the meeting after that, I believe Dylan, is 6:23? Okay. Are you available on June 23rd, sir?
23rd, what day is that? It was next?
It's on Thursday. It happens, we usually meet on Monday, but Monday happens to be a new holiday.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So, this matter will be continued to June 23rd for a further discussion to relook a little bit more at the floor plan, the parking layout, and the landscape. Good luck, sir, hopefully we'll see you then.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, move along on the agenda, and the next matter is a special permit for 50 Wentworth Ave. Tron Pham has applied to the Low Planning Board for special permit approval to subdivide the existing lot at 50 Wentworth Ave and construct a new single-family home on the newly-created lot. The subject property is located in the suburban, single-family zoning district and requires a special permit approval from the Low Planning Board pursuant to section 5.1.17 to reduce the minimum frontage by 12 feet. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Tron Pham. I'm the owner of 50 Wentworth Ave. So, this lot right here was first subdivided in 1961. We went to the ZPA last year and got approval. The reason we didn't go to the planning board last year because before last year, a subject, a project like, like this only needed the ZPA. The city just changed the way how things are done this year. We just filed out a couple of weeks ago when we went to the engineer office to register the plan. But in general, the lot is really big. It is over 21,500 square feet. The newly-subdivided lot would be bigger than 70% of adjacent lots in both areas advantage. So, I think it is very reasonable and consistent with the neighborhood to have a single family on this newly-divided lot, and I hope to have your approval for this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody here to see and would like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? Yes, just come to the microphone, please, and state your name and address for the record, if you would, thank you.
My name is David Fieldsend, I live at 25 Wentworth Ave. I just want to say that I think it's a good project, I think it's a good residential infill. The city needs housing, the state needs housing. It's true that in that little block of Wentworth between Andover Street and Glenwood, and even up farther, all the properties are smaller than the required 10,000 square feet, and I just think it's a good project.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this project? Yes, come to the microphone, please, ma'am, thank you.
Victoria Haydom, 43 Guild Street. And I also share at least, my husband and I share at least 80 feet of property line with Mr. Pham, and I'm proud to do so. I think that this project has been approved, it's been looked at, and I can't understand for the life of me why we're standing here doing this again. He has, he has presented plans that have been comprehensive, that have been agreed upon by the committee, and if we take a look at what our previous speaker said, our neighborhood within a 50, a half a mile radius from my house or Mr. Pham's house, the variances and the land grabs that have occurred over the years are insane. And I could sit here and tell you about three land grabs on Guild Street at this current time that people have closed their eyes to, and yet we're giving Mr. Pham a hard time? I'm going to bring it out, is there something that we're not talking about here? I don't know, but I hope not. I give Mr. Pham full support of this project. I also want to share a story about him. I've never met the man in my life, but I did see him the day that he bought the house in his backyard, and I assume it was Facebook that he was on, and I can tell, as an educator myself, he was on Facebook with a child. I would assume it was his own child, but he, in the backyard, is a peach tree, and he had his phone showing the peaches and describing the excitement of owning that property and telling this child that at some day, this will be ours, and that this was an excitement to this man, and it brought joy to my heart. He didn't know I was there, I was in my backyard, sitting there, just listening and watching, but I saw the joy, and I hope that joy can continue by you granting him the permission to go forth with this project that is so similar to so many other projects that we have done in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in favor? Anybody else? Anybody else in favor? In favor? Favor? At this point in time? Anybody in opposition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, come your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Jim Pollard. My wife, Maureen, and I live at 63 Wentworth Ave, which is directly across the street from 50 Wentworth. My objection is that based on the existing lot with three substantial-sized structures, that is, the existing house, 50 Wentworth, the carriage house behind it, and the garage, that with the addition of a new home, it's just too many substantially-sized structures and too small a space. At a previous zoning meeting, I was, somebody mentioned that the applicant had agreed to demolish the carriage house, which kind of reassured me of my concern, but now I see that there are no plans for that at all. About the carriage house, first of all, it's been used as a living space by my late dear neighbor, Fodias Agoras, for many years, by his family in that, the first floor of the carriage house, with a full kitchen, a small bath, there's kind of a below-ground-level bathroom in the back. And he, he did that for decades, from, I don't know, April to October. And often, for long periods of time, people would live upstairs on the second floor of the carriage house, which has a separate entrance, a staircase on the outside of the house. They lived there for many, many months at a time. And I can't really tell from across the street, but it looks like the door is off in ajar, the sliding door to the first floor, so I don't know if current tenants, I don't know, but have access to it. But it's been a living space historically, as long as we've been here, we've been here about 23 years. At some point, some of the notes from some of the hearings, somebody mentioned the historic value of the carriage house, and it just prompts me to think that, as you look at it from the street, you don't even have to get out of your car, the ridge of the roof is sagging badly. It's, it's, again, obvious from the street, and I think, you know, you might want to have that inspected, and please note that in the minutes. And the, probably the same thing for the second story of the garage, but sticking with the carriage house, people have mentioned that it's consistent with the neighborhood. Yes, you're somewhat correct. There's a series of three-story, three-family houses on the north side of Wentworth next to 50, but none of them are two stories with plumbing, with electricity, maybe, I'm not sure, but maybe heating, or are they livable or have a history of being lived in? So, I understand that the variances that you've already given are not significant, the requests aren't that significant, I guess statistically, to you, and that they're consistent with your practice. But taken together with all three existing structures and all the relatively minor, in your estimation, variances already given, I just think that it's inconsistent with the whole notion of, of planning for this, this area. And that's our objection. I, I know other neighbors see that property from a different angle, but that's it from 63 Wentworth Ave, so. And, and because of the uncertainty of just reading the minutes from the meetings I missed, I would just ask that you please be specific if there are any conditions placed on it, simply because at one point I felt reassured that that carriage house was going to be demolished, which would change the whole thing, but now that's not the case. So, that's my objection, thank you.
So, just following up on that, so, the approval they got was from the Board of Appeals, so it wasn't from the Planning Board.
Okay, I'm sorry, I.
That's okay, that's okay, and.
Thank you for straightening that out.
Oh, yeah, because this is the first time we've seen this project.
Okay.
And unless it came before when I was here, but I've been here for 38 years, so I don't think he's been here that long. So, what we have from our staff is that the zoning board granted approval because, and so, with the condition, which is, let me just pull it up, make sure I'm reading it here right, that the garage on lot B2 shall not be converted into a residential dwelling. So, that's the garage behind within the proposed house. So, that's not to be a residential dwelling.
Yeah.
Then it says, "The infiltration trenches shall be subsurface, and the pear trees shall be located outside of the trench, and final stormwater approval." So, the request that they're asking from us is that on the special permit, he, it requires that he have 90 feet of frontage, so, and we're allowed to give a waiver of up to 15 feet of frontage. So, what he's asking for us is to give him a waiver of, I think it's 12 feet. So, we wouldn't put conditions on, a waiver of the 12 feet, it's either we give him the 12 feet or we don't. And what I think we received from staff is that majority of the houses on that street in the neighborhood don't have the 90 feet frontage because that's something new that just happened within the last three or four years that was changed by the city council on a special permit. Before that, a few years ago, he wouldn't need any relief from us whatsoever, he could have had 75 and not even came in front of him. So, the only request he's asking us to do is to reduce the front yard from 90 to 78 plus, yeah. So, on something like that, so we wouldn't put conditions on it, the variance is the conditions that was given by the ZPA. So, we either say, we'll, we'll grant you the 11.72 feet, or we don't. So, that's the only, that's basically in front of us, the only thing that we can really vote on, so.
Thank you for that, explaining that, I was unclear on that. But it's still within the context of what my objection was, so.
I understand, I'm just trying to clarify what.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did.
Yeah.
I didn't know any of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, when I looked at the site, I said, you know, the person who's going to be, you know, who would be, you know, who, who would this make more of a difference to? I'd say the person to, to the right of them, more so than anybody else if he has the waiver. Usually, you know, one of the butters, you know, across the street, side by side, you look to see what those are, so. But I am happy to see, to be honest with you, that, that garage in the back is not going to be in. going to be another house, which the zoning board of appeals said they couldn't do. Because I saw the same thing when I was up there. And I was there, actually, I've been here a couple of times, because I live in the neighborhood, so I drive by Wentworth quite frequently. So that's my only comment. Thank you, sir, for your comments. We appreciate it. Okay, moving along. Anybody else want to speak in opposition?
Thank you, someone.
Anyone else? Yes, just come to the microphone, please.
Okay, I'm nervous as I have to read, and it's probably not relevant now that I heard what you just said, but I just, I really had to speak up. So I'm Nancy Canny, and I lived at 64 Wentworth, so I am to the, well, depending on which way you left, I'm Lot C.
Okay, you're in Lot C. Gotcha.
Okay.
So you're in the corner of Glenwood?
Yes.
Gotcha.
So at the zoning board meeting, Mr. Pham gave a speech about how he, you know, came to this country when he was 14, and he's worked really hard, and he deserves to do what's best for his family, you know, to build a home. And I agree, I think that's fantastic. He also said that he believes that this project would be a minimal disturbance to the neighbors, and it would increase the neighborhood in value. Okay, so I am a single woman. I grew up in the Boston housing project, and I've also worked really hard, and I've sacrificed a lot to live where I live, and I think I deserve the same. So I've lived on Wentworth Ave. for five years now, and have to say, I feel blessed because the neighbors are fantastic. They're friendly, supportive, and the area is gorgeous. Since Mr. Pham purchased 50 Wentworth Ave., a lot has changed. There is no upkeep to the property. The garage is like a broken window with shade hanging from it. I'm pretty sure there's animals living in there. There is a minimum of four cars parked on the lawn every day with trucks and flatbeds also. The neighbor, the tenant that's living in the home now, she took, oh, and there's also a boat there, too. The tenant told me that her brother-in-law is a mechanic, and they are fixing cars on the property. So that explains to me a lot of the gas that I'm smelling and the revving of engines and the smell of paint. Then there's trash day, where the trash is just all over the place and left out for days, not picked up, and it smells terrible. So also, Mr. Pham agreed to take down the carriage house as a commitment on the last one, but I don't see that reflected on the plan. And the previous plan also said that the new house would be fully fenced, but now there is no mention of that on the plan. So also, as discussed, the variance requirement, I understand that there are houses in the area that do not meet the criteria, but I believe those homes were built before that requirement was implemented. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Just a minute. So, I mean, if, yeah, we appear in cars in the neighborhood, that's a violation of the city code. So you can call City Hall and speak to them and say, this is residential, it's not, it's not a business zone, I mean, for trucks and stuff to be on there. I mean, we've had the same thing where gas stations, all of a sudden, they start storing U-Hauls, and they're not zoned front. And then, you know, it's usually one, then it's two, then there's a couple of three or four cars in the back, and then all of a sudden, it gets bigger and bigger and bigger.
But he has shown up there when they're doing this, so I just.
Yeah, I mean, so if there's, if he's maintaining cars in a single-family residential zone, it's definitely not allowed. So we can do the, they can check the building inspector. I'll let you speak in a minute, but I'm going to listen to everybody else who hasn't spoken first, okay?
Yeah, so I just.
No, 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 no. We're going to get back to you in a minute. Everybody gets to speak first before everybody get, before someone gets to speak second. So take your notes and get ready, and I'm going to hear from everybody, then we go back to you. Yes, next, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nicole Scaff. I live at 16 Glenwood Street. My property is behind Mr. Pham's. So my property is behind Lot B, the barn, and I'm kitty-corner to the carriage house. Much like Miss Canny, I need to read from my notes. This is probably our third or fourth meeting, first time in front of the board. We've met with the zoning board, I think, three times this has come up. And each time we meet with the board, stories change, situations change, plans change, appeals come in, neighbors are not aware of anything. I did not receive a letter in the mail. I am not blaming anybody. It could have been a postal service situation. I do understand that he had letters that were, I'm missing the word, certified, and there was a list that was shown to the ZBA that proved that he had sent the letters. I have concerns that are twofold. I'm going to start with technical terms, and then I'm going to start, unfortunately, with the emotional living terms, since I've been at that property probably over 40 years. So for my technical terms, again, I am not an engineer, I am not an attorney, I am just a local citizen who is trying to see what is happening to the neighborhood. First, the rear and side setback for the garage is not enough. My understanding is that the zone requires a setback for the rear of 25 feet. Lot B has, at best, inches, and I'm talking at, at back, in the back. The side setback for the garage requires 10 feet. There is 3.2 feet less stairs, less the stairs. As for the carriage house, the same holds true. The rear setback requires 25 feet, he has 0.3 feet. And the side setback requires 10 feet, he has 3.2, less the stairs. My understanding also, and again, if I'm wrong, please correct me, I was under the impression that once a handicap ramp was built on a property, that it must remain. That could be commercial, and if it is, I apologize. Again, I also believe that the lot should be conforming with the requirements of the zone. Now that you've explained the requirements of the zone, I need to probably take that back, and one cannot create a non-conforming, which this plan would be. On a side note, and I'm sorry to take up much more of your time, Mr. Pham, whom I invited into my home, sat at my kitchen table and explained how happy he was to move his family out of Andover to Lowell, how he loved gardening and couldn't wait to utilize the beautiful garden adjacent to the carriage house, which I watched for many years flourish with the previous owners, how his children would thrive in the Lowell public school system. My question is to Mr. Pham, why hasn't he moved? Lot A is an absolutely stunning home, and you can all see that based on the real estate pictures. Why hasn't he taken his children out of the Pike School? Why hasn't he been able to enjoy the lovely garden? Finally, why was Lot B listed recently on the MLS for $280,000 and quickly removed once we had to appear in front of the Lowell planning board? Why is the trash overflowing, cars being worked on, as well as gas smells, the boats, the flatbeds? Mr. Pham sat at my kitchen table and convinced us, my mother and I, that this would enhance the neighborhood. I do not see, at this point in time, any enhancement to my beloved neighborhood. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for hearing me. I'm a very, I'm local, I'm, I'm not a lawyer. I don't understand all the gibberish and the terminology, and I think many of us here could say the same thing. It's just, we're left in the dark, and then all of a sudden, we hear, oh, there's a sign that's been put on on 50 Wentworth Ave. It's been moved three times because it didn't, it didn't meet the criteria of where the sign should be posted. The tenants, by the way, are lovely people. It's not about the tenants, it's not about Mr. Pham and his heritage, it's about what is right for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Yes, just kept in that microphone, say your name and address, please.
So my name is Rebecca Caswell, and I live at 74 Wentworth, so I'm right across the street from Nancy, and I have direct sightline onto Mr. Pham's property. And I just want to echo some things that have previously been said, that since he's purchased the property, I have noticed the condition of the property kind of deteriorating, that if you drive by today even, that the lawn has not been mowed, bushes have not been trimmed back, and they're encroaching on the sidewalk, that there is a window in the garage that's broken, that's just kind of hanging there. There are cars and car parts and a boat and things. And I don't want to punish Mr. Pham for the actions of his tenant. I do, I think that would be unfair, but it is his responsibility as the landlord to make sure that the property is kept up and that tenants are doing what they need to do. Some of those cars that have been worked on are sometimes parked on the sidewalk, and I have a photo of that, and they don't have license plates, and I think that's also problematic. So again, I don't want to punish him for what his tenants are up to, but I don't feel assured that, based, and again, like things like was already mentioned, there being an excessive amount of trash that's sitting out during the construction process, I would want some reassurance is that those problems are going to be corrected, that trash is dealt with in a timely manner, that the lawn gets mowed, things like that. And I also agree with the previous comments that there are already three structures on that property, that adding another one does kind of start to feel a little bit, a little bit crowded. So that's all.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Anybody on Zoom, Dylan?
Someone did say on Zoom they were here to speak about it, but they haven't unmuted, so.
Okay. Sure, we'll hear you now.
So just to clarify, the carriage house is, will be demolished. When we went to the zoning appeal and on the plan, it say it will be demolished, and it will be demolished. It will be filled in and then green space in the previous carriage foundation, so it will be green space, grass. So in term of distribution of the, right now, there are three structures there. When the new house is built, the foundation is the same, is about approximately the same as the foundation of the carriage house. So I think it will be a better distribution. So on one side, it will be a new house and garage, and on the other side, it will be just the house and carriage house demolished and green space in there. I think it's better for, I think it's just, it's better than it is right now in term of like green space for Mr., for the back of the house, green space there instead of, you know, instead of the carriage house, that is, that is not in a good shape. The garage on the right side, it will be the garage of the new house, where it will be renovated to be the garage of the new house. And just, just as you see on the condition of the zoning appeal, that garage will never be living space. I don't know what else I can say, but, and in term of setback for the new house, you know, it is a really big lot, it is over 9,000 square feet. I mean, the total lot is 21,500 square feet. If we want to get like 1,000 more square feet, we can by going in the back, but I don't think that serves any purpose. You know, if we can be creative and get a little 1,000 feet in the back, it can be like 10,000 square feet. But I don't think it serves any purpose. And the new house will meet all the setback, you know, 25 in the front, 25 in the back, the two sides more than, more than 25 feet. So I think it's just reasonable. And just like I said, I, yep.
So when do you intend to demolish the carriage house?
I mean, as soon as I can get, just like I said, I was planning to, to apply for a permit already, because before this year, a similar project like this only required ZBA. I did not know that it would require planning board. I just found that out when I go to register the plan with the city engineer office. So I was planning to apply for the, for building, for the destruction, I mean, demolition permit already. They wanted me to get the, you know, the clearance from the pest control and stuff like that. I got that already. I was planning to apply for demolition permit already. It's just that, and then I found out about, you know, that I have to go to planning board, because before previous project, the city upload just started this year.
Well, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I interject?
Sure.
Because I think we're going to put a quick stop to all of this. So what you're before us for a special permit under section 5.1.1.7. And that's for the reduced frontage on the lot. That is the one reason you're here before us. So if I go to the zoning ordinance, and the chairman and myself served on the board when there was a project on Harvard Street that came before us under this very same special permit, we were involved. I was on the neighborhood side when this first came on board. He was still serving on the planning board, go back to the 1980s. But the whole idea was to provide the option to have a reduced frontage on the lot. However, there would be some oversight as to how that will look on the lot. You were compelled to come and explain how that's going to look. There was some question about the carriage house. I'm going to read the section of the ordinance, and it's unfortunate this wasn't addressed, I think, before here. And I don't know what happened with the ZBA, but any lot that's reduced frontage from what's the requirement, requires the, this relief that you're looking for, this special permit. And I'm going to read this, because the wordsmithing is very important here. Planning board finds, this is under what you're applying under 5.1, 5.1.1.7. The planning board finds the proposed development satisfies the criteria established Section 11.32A, and that's the special permit general criteria. The planning board shall consider the nature of the proposed development on the lot as well as the nature of the lot or proposed lot before granting a special permit under section 5.1.7. The planning board shall not grant a special permit under this section prior to receipt of written design review comments from the Department of Planning Development 45 days, 45 calendar days following the termination of the public hearing, except in cases where the project is subject to review and approval of Lowell Historic Board. We want to see the design of the house as it's going to sit on the lot. I want to see the design of the house as it's going to sit on the lot. That's how we do this with the, with the reduced frontage, to see how that's going to fit on the lot.
I think we have that design of the house.
I have no, I have not. Have you seen, Mr. Chairman, the design of the house?
Dylan, have we received anything from planning staff, what the house will look like?
The previous ZBA application likely included the.
So we have not received an application for tonight's meeting for the special permit?
Right.
Correct, okay.
Yeah.
So what they got from ZBA is water under the bridge, and so we have no idea.
Yeah, so we want to see how it's going to look, the material even that's going to be used, how that's going to face on the lot, because it is a reduced frontage. So I think you did a good job showing the, you know, went down there, the existing homes that have reduced frontage, smaller lots, does it fit the character? You know, it's borderline, it's right where there's a lot of homes that fall under that criteria, that lot size. But truthfully, we really want to see how that's going to fit in, right? Because it is, just because there is some nonconformity that exists there, if we're going to continue the nonconformity, we just want to make sure how that's going to look. So even in existing structures in existing neighborhoods, we really take a lot of care into how, you know, especially when the tighter a neighborhood is. This is the suburban, single-family zone, the minimum is 10,000 square feet. You are looking for reduced size on that. You know, it does, it state here that, you know, and at one time, and the wording was changed, the planning board prior shall not approve, and it says 45 days following the termination of the public hearing, except in cases where the project is subject to review and approval by the historic board. But we haven't even, we haven't seen it. I don't want to get a comment 45 days after on a project we haven't seen the design. So I think for the purpose of myself making a decision on this, Mr. Chairman, I want to see the design of the home, how it's going to sit. The applicant has mentioned the carriage house is coming down. Honestly, as we sat here this evening, that was unclear as to. Honestly, as we sat here this evening, that was unclear as to how all of this was going to fit. So I would, again, before we can make a decision, would want to see how that new home is going to fit on the lot. And that would be how we'd want to see that on, on a reduced frontage, where you're proposing to put a home in that situation. You can go on Harvard Street, look at that. It was behind, between two old Victorian homes. One was a group home, and the other one was a, was a big Victorian, and it was reduced frontage, and that's how we did that, Mr. Chairman.
Am I correct? So the other thing on this is, when you went for the ZPA, as a result of getting your stuff for the ZPA, your other option is that you could have came before us for a subdivision. But instead, since you went and got the ZPA relief first, then you had to come to us for the special permit. But if you didn't go for the ZPA and get all the relief they requested there, now you're with the special permit request only. Because before, it would have been a subdivision to create another lot on, on, just another lot. So. Any other board members have any more comments? How about that with you, Caleb? Do you mind?
So, so it's not very clear to me. The lot is subdivided, right? A, B, C are existing separate lots? Maybe staff can help me to clarify the situation.
There exists, existing, it's one lot. So that's why this approval is necessary to file an A and R to split the lots.
I see. But Lot C is also part of the lot.
No, Lot C is a young lady over here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So B and A are.
Yeah, she's the one who lives on Connelly Glenwood.
Got it.
Yeah.
So it currently exists as one lot. Okay. So even with, so with special permit, it can become two lot? Is it what happened?
Yes, so the applicant obtained variances for the, all of the relief that was necessary to have the smaller lots, but that doesn't entitle someone to, in A and R plan, you're required to have the frontage. However, if you can obtain definitive subdivision approval, or you can obtain a special permit for reduced frontage, and that entitles someone to split the lots.
Got it.
Yeah, so that's getting back to they could have came for subdivision approval, but since they get the variance, and now they're limited to the special permit.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for clarification. Well, I, I cannot disagree with, with the book. So what Jerry say, Jerry say is, is, I think is a necessary step, so we will need to review the design of the house. That's all I.
Thank you. Ms. Galvin, any questions or comments?
I just have one comment. The plans that were submitted to us, the site plan is dated September 15th, 2020, and I would just ask that the plan be updated to show that the existing carriage house is proposed to be demolished, if that is the plan. It's not shown on the plan that we have, so I would just ask that it be updated. Thank you.
So if you, I imagine, so this is the plan that you use for the Board of Appeals, right? Because it says right here, Board of Appeals Plan. So when you went to Board of Appeals, that must have been back a couple of years ago. So the proposal was to take down the carriage house a couple of years ago, but it's still there? Yes, no?
Yes, because we didn't, we didn't get the, the permit to, to do it yet, because we don't know if we can actually go ahead and, and build it. That's the reason why we didn't demolish it yet.
So what's holding you up for the permit? Not us, right? I mean, your frontage relief from us wouldn't hold up your demolition permit for the carriage house, would it?
Uh.
I don't think so.
I, I'm not.
Like Dylan, I mean, for us relief on the street, unless it do with demolition of a carriage house and back another piece of property.
The demo permit will be at the discretion of the building commissioner, but typically this would be, I would view this as permitting for the new single-family.
Okay. All right. So the only other thing I would say is, you know, if people are doing mechanical work on the, on the property there, I can see where the neighbors aren't too happy. And if you're the owner of the property, it is your responsibility and not the tenant.
I have not.
If they're making, you know, mechanical work on the property is more than one, I mean, it's one thing if I'm out there, you know, putting windshield fluid in my car, but if I have four or five other type of cars, flatbeds there, people doing mechanical work, that's not for a single-family residential zone. And the people are going to complain about it, they're going to come down after you, and I can understand why, you know, that they wouldn't be happy about that. So that's your responsibility. It's your, you're, you're the property owner, right?
Yes.
So you get all the pros and cons of being a property owner.
To be honest, I'm not aware of anybody fixing the car. Obviously, you know, I would be, you know, I would be strongly object to that. I have not.
If, if we're looking for design of the plan, maybe that's something you can look into between now and the next time you come back.
Yep.
You know, I mean, if there's concerns from some of the neighbors, and you want to be a good neighbor, like you told your people when you moved in, then neighbors will let you know how you're, how you're doing, you know?
Definitely. It's not good for me that, obviously, I don't want them to.
So that's a case you might want to address a bit, make things better, more beneficial for you.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? So, so I think what the board is looking for is to see if we can get a, to see what the design of the house is.
Yes, we.
So basically, we'd have to see what the house would look like. You have to give us the architectural plan.
Yes, we actually have the architectural plan, detailed architectural plan and everything.
Okay. So if you could get those, and then if you could just update the plot plan, we don't have to do a survey plan, a plot plan is a lot cheaper than a survey plan. Because if we're looking at this, you know, like I say, this is, where was the date on it?
Down here, September 15th, 2020.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Oh, yeah, see, mine dropped the very bottom, I have mine, yeah, okay. Yeah, mine from Mr., oh, yeah, okay, yeah, okay. So what's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the matter until.
June 23rd.
June 23rd meeting, where the applicant will submit elevations for the proposed home, an updated site plan, showing how that will sit on the lot and how the both lots are going, the finished lots are going to look, reflecting any structures that will be demolished, or any structures to be built. We want to see, want to see a plot plan of how that's going to look on the, on the site with the reduced frontage.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Aye, second? Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. So the matter will be continued to June 23rd. Thank you very much, everybody for coming down to speak in this evening. Obviously, this will be an ongoing public hearing, so any further comments, we can address everything else on June 23rd. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter we have is a zoning amendment, 83, excuse me, 89 Agawam Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance City of Lowell, Mass., with respect to chapter 290, therefore entitled Lowell Zoning Code. The proposed amendment would extend the existing TTF zone, which is the traditional neighborhood two-family zoning district, to an area of the above address, 89 Agawam Street, that is presently zoned TSF, which is traditional neighborhood, single-family. May we ask the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of the Law Offices of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Mr. Michael Amor, who's the owner of 89 Agawam Street. I have petitioned the city council on behalf of Mr. Amor to rezone this property, as the chairman mentioned, from a traditional single-family zoning district to the traditional two-family zoning district. The district line abuts this property at 85 Agawam Street, so between 89 and 85 Agawam Street is the zoning district between TSF and TFF. Mr. Amor purchased the property back in October of 2021. Through his investigation, prior to purchasing the property, he determined with the help of the building commissioner that the property was initially constructed as a three-family home many, many, many decades ago. It was most recently used as a group home, starting at some point in 1993. Because it was most recently used as a group home, the building commissioner classifies that as a single-family use. So there's no option to use the property as a two-family right now. Mr. Amor's intention is to, he currently has his extended family living in the home, he's not living there, but if, if this rezone petition is successful, he intends to occupy the second floor with his wife and, and kids. The law department and the DPD staff have weighed in on this petition. The law department has no concerns with regard to spot zoning, and they also see the, the request as a natural extension of the zoning district. The DPD, DPD staff has no, no concerns. They, they feel that there's no detriment to the neighborhood in, in changing the zoning line to include 89 Agawam Street. So we know that the, your, your board is to either approve or, or not approve the request, and I'm sorry, not, either recommend or not to recommend the request to the city council. We hope that you see it our way and that you recommend the request to the city council. We are before the city council on Tuesday, May 24th, for the, for the public hearing. So if the, after the chairman opens it up to the public, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board or public may have.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of the rezoning? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Anybody in opposition to the rezoning? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. Board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment.
Sure. Comments, questions, fine.
Going, looking at the property, it really epitomizes a well-kept property in a dense neighborhood. I was, I was thoroughly impressed with the, with the property itself, and with the garage, and has handicap accessibility, and I, I just, the fencing, the shrubbery, and, you know, it's, it shows how you can have a home in a dense neighborhood and still have it look very, very nice. So I, and it appears to be a, a natural extension of the zoning as, you know, identified by the law department, and I think it's, it, it makes perfect sense. Probably less invasive than a group home on the site as well.
Yes, I would agree. There are many homes in the neighborhood in this particular, on this particular street that are very well-kept homes in, in a dense neighborhood. It's a great thing to see.
Sinead, any questions?
I agree with the staff comments and with Jerry's comment, and I'm in support of this project.
Caleb?
Nothing more to add.
Plus, it's a nice corner lot. I mean, you know, when I get out, I stop before the intersection, get out, walk around, and notice how it goes all the way down the side there, and I'm like, wow, and he has the garage, the driveway, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good-sized home, I mean.
It was, it was a three-family for many decades.
Wow, yeah.
It was a two-family for, for at some point prior to 1993, and it's a well-kept home. Mr. Amor will keep the property, next to the owner occupied.
Yeah. I mean, there's indicating, you know, by the law department for a spot zone, basically what they tell us, you know, anytime you want to extend a zone, it's not spot zoning. In this case, it's, yes, the extension of it. It's when.
You just drop.
Yeah, you want to put, drop one here, like, yeah, for example, like, say we have all single-family residences, then you drop in a business, you know? That's where you can get into the spot zoning. But anytime there's an extension, so you draw the line a little bit different. A lot of times when we done rezoning, and Jerry's been on the other side of it time to time, everything else, you look at sometimes what fits better in the neighborhood, and in this neighborhood, I mean, there, a lot of them are two-family, three-family, so.
And the home is set up, if you've all been by the house, it has the two front doors like the traditional two-family homes do.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, by looking at it, I don't see any detriment to it at all, so I'd be in favor of the meclanation as well. So I'll make a motion that we recommend the rezoning for the city council.
Second that, Mr. Chairman?
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, so the recommendation is approved. Good luck, and good luck before the city council, we wish you well.
Thank you, thank you all for your time.
Take care, council. Okay, moving along on the agenda, let me just mark my notes here. Do we have any comments from board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just, a follow-up to the last meeting, and I know Sinead, you were not here, present at the last meeting, and Caleb, you were here. We reviewed the traffic study from Market Basket as part of the planning board condition for the approval of, of the Market Basket on Old Ferry Road and Pataca Boulevard. And part of that was to, the reason for the traffic study is to advance out five years to see the impact of the development, and also to understand what is going on around that immediate area as the traffic patterns change, and we have a traffic light that wasn't there before, with the idea that we're going to have hopefully a traffic circle, what's the impact to the residential neighborhoods? And one of the, one of the streets that was identified was Townsend Ave, and in the traffic study, and unfortunately, and at this point, I don't think it's going, we're going to gain anything by trying to figure out how we, this, this happened, but if we're as a responsible body, as a, making that a condition of the approval, if you could give this, Caleb, to Sinead, and then I'll drop me here. And I alluded to it briefly, and one of the speakers did mention this at the, at the meeting, and I really, I mean, I walk past this almost every night, so I was actually kind of embarrassed. It, I highlighted the, the memo which summed up the traffic study, and the traffic counts were done on January 20th, on a Thursday, weekday, during, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The Townsend Ave has a do-not-enter restriction from Pataca Boulevard from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
The counts.
Yeah. And by the way, they had some, they had some counts, but it wasn't determined to be significant. Well, there's good reason for that. And then in the other direction off of Bonham Ave, it's from 7:30, I had the picture, 7:30 AM to 2, 2:00 PM to 3:30 PM. My concern, and it really is, I do believe especially the neighborhood streets, I really hate the idea of having to wait another year or, you know, towards the end of the year to include a proper traffic count for that street. And if there's a way, we can either have the, the engineering firm for Market Basket do a weekday count on Townsend Ave, so we can get some numbers, really for the, for the day, whether they have to put counters on there, however they need to do it, but we need to understand the, the traffic pattern. And I, I went back, and even in the minutes, they mentioned it was mislabeled, I couldn't figure out the directions that they were, counts were referring to, because then they were talking about taking a left-hand turn and a right-hand turn. Well, that means the cars that they counted taking those turns were going down this street during this time between 4:00 and 6:00. It makes no sense. So I, I really think if we're going to get any kind of benefit out of this, as it relates to the, that's probably the, the street impacted the most of the change to the intersection at Bonham and Old Ferry. That is the last street that you can bear, you can turn on to to avoid that intersection, and I think this was a huge swing and a miss, unfortunately, and however it happened, it happened. But if we could get, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how you want to, you know, that, but this, it was a condition of the planning board, and I would like to address it before we wait, instead of waiting until the next complete traffic study, in order for us to have some baseline.
So I think we'd have to reach out to Market Basket and either through staff and tell them what Jerry's concerns are, and see if they're willing to do that. If not, we can have them back before the planning board. Is that something, Dylan, that you would feel comfortable reaching out, or you want to speak with Fran about it, or, and get back to us, whatever you're more comfortable with?
Yeah, I'm not sure the process for that, so we'll speak with Fran, and we can follow up with the board.
Okay. And then if Fran has any questions, she can call us directly, especially even Jerry, just saying, you know, these are, I mean, like, you know, when they said, you know, these are traffic counts, you know, during this time, and the speaker comes on and says, well, it says. well, it says no cars down here that time of night, and they're like, oh, yeah? Yeah, yeah, yeah. They go, oh, yeah, no. So it wasn't that bad, but even though there was plenty cars there. So, and then they said, yeah, they would look into that. So I think Jerry's just looking at if they could, you know, follow up on that before waiting the whole year, right?
Right. And I'd like to get, and I'd like to get the council on before school gets out.
So if we could reach out to them, mention their concern, and then you could speak with Fran, and if you have any questions, you could go through me or call Jerry directly to see how they wanna reach out to the applicant who did the traffic, uh, study, or who, or who did the presentation, I should say, before the last meeting, to see if they could, um, and if they have any question, and Jerry could tell Fran exactly what they're looking at.
Yeah, definitely. We can, uh, I'll talk with Fran about that, and we'll see what we can, can do.
Okay, great.
That's how it's actually, you think?
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Does any of the board members have any follow-ups or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I will say, we did hire finally another executive director for NEMCOG. It was quite a process where we, uh, you know, originally had hired an individual and, that didn't work out in the sense that they didn't feel it was a good fit, and so we had to repulse the position, and, uh, and we went through quite a vigorous, um, interview process, and, uh, and I think it really, the candidate was, was really the best fit. I think we are one of the best regional planning individuals in the state. Probably the next planning board meeting, they, they plan to start in July, so the next planning board meeting, I'm actually gonna bring in kind of background and, and just give an update on, on, uh, on who was hired, but I think, uh, I think city staff dealing with this person will be very impressed, uh, as well as the other nine, you know, the nine communities in the NEMCOG region, uh, I think will be very, very impressed. So, uh, you know, we'll stay tuned, I'll give you more details on that, but, uh, was waiting till they signed on the dotted line, which they did, so.
Okay. I was gonna say, when they start? So anything, anything else further from board members? If not, we can entertain them. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion made in second by Sinead, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. We have adjourned, a good night, and thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dylan.